It is not okay. I can certainly try. I think I sound fine. Do you think I sound fine? All right, excellent.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October 16th, 2025, regular meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. My name is Donnell Weish. I will be chairing the meeting tonight. For detailed information on meeting procedures, please review the full printed meeting agenda provided at each end of the dais. Manager Kelly, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Absolutely noting that we have three advanced absences this evening for Commissioner Abrams, Hammerschmidt, and Lee. Commissioner Weish.
Here.
Councilmember Dish. Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner Weatherby.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Norton.
Here.
You do have a quorum. I will note since you have lighter attendance this evening that there are five votes required for any affirmative action.
So noted. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, moved by Commissioner Weatherby, seconded by Commissioner Mills. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2025 meeting, moved by Commissioner Weatherby, seconded by Commissioner Mills. Is there any discussion of the minutes from October 7th? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll take a moment and welcome Commissioner and Council Member Dish, because we have to ask if she has a report for us. It's okay. We'll start with Manager Kelly.
Sure thing. I would like to pass on some communications from Planner Bennett and Manager Leonard. The first of which is to let you know that the appendix table of contents and the pagination was able to be fixed for the third draft of the comprehensive plan, and that updated version is posted to the hub, which is engage.a2gov.org. I will also point out a recent addition to your packet. I was going to give a report out on their behalf during the manager report, and they decided, because it was a little longer, to format it as a memo instead. So that is now in the packet. It is printed and in front of you, and that shares the expected process for the review and adoption phase of the comprehensive plan. Staff do intend to extend the review period to January 5th to allow flexibility for stakeholders, adjacent communities, and the public, as this falls toward a busy end of the calendar year and, of course, some very popular holidays. During the 63-day review period, the intention is to collect public comment through a form on the hub page, so engage.a2gov.org. At the top of that hub page, you will see the comprehensive plan tile. You click on that. There will be opportunities to submit your comments for the third draft in the hub page. We know that some people are going to email planning@a2gov.org. We will patiently reply and give instructions for how to put that into the hub. That way we can corral them all in one location, and then later we'll be doing sort of a roll-up of those comments and putting them in your packets for the November 18th and December 16th meetings, so that you can see them. You could also log into the hub and check on that progress, but... And then there's some further information that in preparation for those meetings, if commissioners would like to consider any additional amendments, to please send them to Michelle Bennett by November 4th at 5:00 PM. After that time, staff will compile them similarly to the prior two rounds of edits, and those will be brought forth for discussion. At the conclusion of the comment period, staff anticipate finalizing the draft, and any discussed edits during the review period will be noted, but no actual draft edits will occur until the conclusion of the review period. So I would like to say I'm happy to take your questions on this, and I will do my best, but I am a messenger of this memo tonight.
Commissioner Norton.
Did you say it was printed out somewhere for us to have?
It should be printed off in front of you. It may have only been provided. I'm sorry if it was just provided to the chair, but I can provide you with a printed copy if you would like.
Or just our PDF to us would be...
It is in the packet for this evening. It was originally going to be a verbal update for a manager report, but it was formalized into an attachment.
Okay, I'll find it. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams.
As far as I can tell, the extension out to January 5th, I'm going off memory here. Is it January 5th that it closes? That's a... It looks like about a two-week extension to the 63-day period. Does that more or less track your recollection?
Uh, that sounds about right.
It's not a big one in other words. It's just get us through the holidays and snap the chocolate. Thanks.
Yes, that's the idea.
Got it.
Other questions from commissioners? Thank you, Manager Kelly. Councilmember Dish, do you have a report for us?
Thank you. I think that there is only one thing worthy of note, but I'm not even sure that it's quite relevant, but there is a temporary extension in the code, not the UDC, or rather, a temporary reduction of distance requirements between K-12 schools and marijuana facilities and establishments. I don't know... I thought that the marijuana establishments were initially regulated in the UDC, or yes, or...
The buffer distance is in the UDC. This would be an amendment, and this was discussed. I can't recall the exact meeting, but it was within, I think, the last month. This was...
Yeah, it was the 6th, yeah. So, but this is a temporary one. So will this be coming to Planning Commission? Because we do this, or...
I'm not aware of a temporary change. The only thing that our department has forwarded was the Planning Commission item that was recommended for approval.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, council voted to temporarily extend it because it would make existing entities non-conforming until they heard back from planning on whether we should adopt a new approach, which we decided, but we'll go back. So there is a temporary notice to the UDC, which went out, I think, this week, because I received it in my email.
Okay. And Manager Leonard, maybe more aware of that? I do know that the marijuana amendment is supposed to be, I think, in your packet for next Monday. Yes, it is, for first reading, so that would probably what you're referencing be to tide you over to keep businesses from falling out of conformity for that period until you can get to that second reading and effective date, if it is chosen to be approved?
I think that's correct. All right. Are there any other reports from commissioners or committee liaisons? Seeing none. Written communications are included in today's packet. You can access it in Legisstar. Just go to the calendar, select City Planning Commission, and select the year 2025, and then scroll down until you find today's meeting. That brings us to item number six. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on issues not listed as a public hearing or a dedicated public comment on today's agenda. We will first hear from those of you who are present, then remote participants. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone, or use the raised hand feature if using Zoom. For phone access, call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name if using Zoom. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background sound. For all participants, whether online or in person, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present in the chambers who would like to speak at this time? Seeing... Oh, yes. Please come right up. You have three minutes. There are three lights, green, you're good to go, yellow, start to wrap up, and red, please stop. Welcome.
All right, thank you. My name is Lenny Lamping. I work for the Inter Cooperative Councils, or Council, which is off-campus affordable student housing here in Ann Arbor. We've been around for 100 years, almost. 1932 is when we were started. And I live in Ypsilanti, so I'm not a resident of Ann Arbor, but I do work here. So I'm here today to make sure that we are on your radar when you are considering usage for any of these developments that are going up, high-rise developments, if you are interested, and I hope that you are, in expanding affordable housing that is available to low-income students in the area, in addition to, of course, the multifamily affordable housing that we've heard about being a priority as well. I am representing my organization, and I'm hoping that we can request space for ADA-compliant office space. We currently have a renovated Victorian house downtown, very close to the downtown library, and it is not accessible to several of our members who are in wheelchairs and use mobility aids, and we are looking for ADA-compliant space so that we can actually have them come into our office when we're doing business. So we would love to have office space. We have 14 employees who work full-time in our organization, and in addition to that, if there is space available for student housing that can be run cooperatively as well, we would love, love, love to work with the Planning Commission on how that might work. We're open to apartment-style housing, not just group housing, but that can still be functional as a cooperative-style living arrangement. And I believe that's all I have to say, so I'll cede the rest of my time. Again, my name is Lenny Lamping, and I'm Director of Member Resources at the ICC. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none. Do we have remote participants?
There is one hand raised. Mr. Chair, that is Mark. You have permission to address the Planning Commission for three minutes.
Hello, this is Mark Skirbo from West Liberty Street. I just wanted to speak in support of tonight's discussion around, I guess, 350 Williams, the Y lot. I'm so excited to see...
Mark, I'm sorry, Mark. Can I pause you for a second? Because I think we have a public, dedicated public comment for that. So, Manager Kelly...
In that case, can I actually speak about something not related to that topic?
Of course you can. Manager Kelly, would you reset their clock?
Thank you so much. Sorry about that. Then, what I wanted to say is that I was recently visiting some friends in Portland, Portland, Oregon, that recently went through a similar program, including what they call the residential infill program. And we stayed with some friends who were only able to purchase house because the previous owner had built a large ADU above their garage and had moved into that ADU, basically made a condo arrangement, and then sold the rest of their house. So my friends are now in this wonderful, multi-generational housing situation, and the previous owner of the house had planted tons of fruit trees and gardens, and my friends now get to share that garden with the older former homeowner, who's now in the large ADU. I believe that ADU is larger than our ADU standards allow, so it's something much more akin to what we will eventually have with our enablement of at least triplexes around the city. And I'm so excited to see us move towards enabling and allowing for more density. We're not taking anybody's single-family homes, but we're allowing for more density, which allows for more multi-generational housing, which allows for more community-based housing. And I'm just so excited to see that kind of opportunity come to Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another hand raised. Tom Stolberg, you have three minutes to address Planning Commission.
Good evening. Tom Stolberg, 1202 Traver Street. I received in my mailbox a trifold mailer from my two Ward 1 council members and the mayor. In there, the mayor laments misinformation or misleading information. However, that flyer also contains misleading information about the comprehensive plan, some specific details that are not accurate. Now, I know our taxpayer money, Council voted to allow them to spend a significant amount of money on these type of mailers, and it's sending out misleading information. How much taxpayer money will then be spent to send the correction across Ward 1. I leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stolberg.
There are no further hands raised.
Great. Seeing none, I will close the public comment and move us to agenda item number seven, communication from commissioners. Is there any? Commissioner Mills.
I'd just like to thank the commenter for bringing this item to our attention, and I didn't pick up a specific place necessarily that you had in mind for... that you would like it either reflected in the comprehensive plan or in future zoning revisions, but coming and providing a comment helps get it in our brains for when it comes before us. And specifically in the future, too, if there's an opportunity where you're seeing, feel free to come back. We appreciate participation.
Anyone else? Seeing none, let's move to agenda number eight, public hearings scheduled for the next business meeting. Manager Kelly.
Okay, so the next meeting of the Planning Commission is not a regular meeting. That will be your retreat, taking place next Tuesday, starting at 4:00 PM at the plaza on the north side of the South and East University intersection. I'm told it is the East Engineering Arch by Ms. DeLeo. And so you will find us there. We'll try to make ourselves very visible. That will not have any action items for you. However, the next meeting after that will be Wednesday, November 5th, and starting at 7:00 PM. It's on a Wednesday to accommodate the election, which will be on that Tuesday. You will have before you an ordinance to amend section 5.19.1 parking requirements, 5.19.5 use of parking facilities, and 5.19.7 design of bicycle parking facilities of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor to modify sections to update bicycle parking requirements and to improve usability, design, and accessibility of bicycle parking facilities. Your staff recommendation is approval. That is the only item.
Great, thank you. To the gentleman that just walked in, welcome. There's an agenda on the dais. We are on number eight. Well, nine now. Unfinished business. Seeing that there is none, we'll move on to our regular business, which is a petition. It's SP250009, 350 South Fifth Avenue, PUD site plan for Planning Commission approval. A proposed site plan to develop a mixed-use building containing ground floor retail and 330 apartments on a .8-acre site zoned, 350 South Fifth PUD. The building will be 313,000 square feet and 20 stories tall. Site improvements include creating a shared service drive along the north side of the site from South Fifth to South Fourth for solid waste access and future use by AAA TA for additional bus boardings. Staff recommendation, approval, or excuse me, approve with conditions. Our petitioners are here, and so we will start with the petitioners, and then a presentation by Planner DeLeo. So you all can make your way to the dais. I think you have 10 minutes. If you need more time, just let us know. I think we're in agreeable mood tonight. Okay.
I don't think we'll need that long. I do have my team here. Thank you for inviting us. My name's Jennifer Hall. I'm the Director of the Ann Arbor Housing Commission, and we have Lindsay Furco with Smith Group, and we have some folks that are available by phone. I don't know if they can be let into the meeting. We are partnering with Smith Group as well as Related Midwest, and so they are both available to answer questions that I am not able to answer. And... So this is the corner of Fifth and William Street. There's currently a large surface parking lot there. You can see the AAA TA in the background. This is a rendering of what we would like it to look like. As I mentioned, we're partnering with Related Midwest. We also are partnering with AAA TA, the DDA, and the City of Ann Arbor. The Ann Arbor Housing Development Corporation is actually a 501(c)(3) created by the Ann Arbor Housing Commission. Smith Group is our architect and engineers, and you can see the information that has... I'm not going to read it to you, but it's there for those who are interested. This actual project history could go back to 2003, which is when I started working for the city. That is the point in time when the old YMCA was condemned. We had to move all the folks that were living there, in the SROs, to hotels in October, which, if you know what happens in October, it's a very challenging time to have long-term stays in hotels. The city had the right of first refusal to acquire the building from the YMCA because they had put funding, as well as the DDA, into building some of those SRO... There was 100 SRO, single-room occupancy. It was treated like a hotel from the YMCA's perspective, but it was mostly used for people who are transient or could not afford to live anywhere else. So we had a lot of folks who would otherwise have been homeless. So we're going to skip ahead to 2018. A lot of back and forth happened with that property, many opportunities and challenges in trying to develop it. Back in 2018, I talked to the city administrator about, could we look at doing an analysis of the site to look at what would make sense as affordable housing, which would have been a little different than historically where city council would have a conversation about what do we want to see there, and then you have to try to figure out how to make that happen. So I wanted to make sure we had more data to figure out what was actually feasible at the time. And we ended up, city council, very thankfully and unanimously, said, yes, let's do that, but also let's look at all these other sites the city owns that are underutilized as potential sites for affordable housing. Here we are, five, six years later. That's a reminder at how difficult it is to develop, especially a downtown, large project like this. It's very complicated. It's taken a lot of effort, a lot of public-public-public-public partnership, and we are finally here today with our site plan for approval with the Planning Commission. The biggest values driving the design and this project has always been affordable housing. We had a PUD with supplemental regs approved in, whenever that date was back there, 2022, with an intent to rebuild at least 100 affordable units on the site, and with an expectation that if we could, we would do more. And our design then was to have two towers. Some of you, I think, were still on the Planning Commission from back then, and that turned out to be not... It was a very expensive design to have two separate buildings with separate elevators and separate stairs and emergency egress, et cetera. And so we are now presenting to you a different design that is more feasible, and I like it a lot better because there's more affordable housing. So our old project had both market rate and affordable housing. Today, we are... All the units are affordable. The property was acquired from the city, and the deed restricts it to having affordable housing. It doesn't have to 100% be affordable housing. The city's pilot ordinance allows an income average of 60% AMI, and the city's target has always been 60% AMI on many different ways to get affordable housing. And so our income average will be less than 60% AMI. There will be some units that will be up to 80% AMI, and a lot of units will be at 30% of area median income, for those who don't know what AMI. 30% of area median income, for those who don't know what AMI stands for. The second value is that the property abuts the main transit center, the Blake Transit Center, and they have a hub-and-spoke type system. And so they have always wanted to be able to expand, and as a public entity, it was important to us to partner with them to make sure that we can offer them a chance to expand. And so we're actually providing part of our site for that. And then, of course, for the city's sustainability requirements and expectations, it's an all-electric building. We have almost, I think, 750 or 800-foot geothermal heating and cooling wells, and we will meet the Enterprise Green Community Certification standards as part of our financing. I think everybody knows where it is. This is the site, right downtown, next to the Blake, across from the library. And I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay, so she can talk about the specifics of the design.
Good evening. I'm a landscape architect with Smith Group, leading the site plan approval process. And I've been on this project since, I think, 2022 with the original PUD and the two-tower concept. So this is our proposed site plan. You can see the building footprint in the light blue. We're proposing retail on the William and Fourth Avenue corner, and then the residential lobby and amenities are on the east side of the building. We front East William Street, and the streetscape just meets the city DDA standards with the required street trees that we need to have, and landscape beds, and curved planters, bike hoops, lighting, and then some open sidewalk space for potential retail use if there's a tenant that would like to have cafe seating or something like that. Up Fifth Avenue, that's where the entrance to the residential lobby is. I have a floor plan that'll show that detail on the next slide, I believe. But we have, again, pretty standard streetscape and temporary parking zone for drop-offs, Uber, DoorDash, all that. And then moving around the corner of the building, you see this bus and service lane. So this is very unique to the project. As Jennifer said, we're providing for bus bays for the Blake Transit Center. So we're showing, our plan includes the curb line for those bus bays, and so we've worked very carefully with AAA to ensure circulation and bus movements and all that stuff that just works. But the portion north of the dash line where those buses are is a separate project with the AAA that will be, it's an early concept design right now, but will be coming later down the pipeline through site plan. And then we have South Fourth Avenue. So that side of the project is being designed by the South Fourth Avenue Project Team. So that's being completely reconstructed next year. The plans have been developed, and they are at 90% and being reviewed by the city right now. We are widening sidewalks to provide more amenities for ridership, having to adjust some where bus bays are currently to accommodate this new drive approach for the 350 South Fifth Avenue project, new streetscape amenities and all that. So this is the ground floor plan, so retail at Fourth and William, residential amenities at, on the opposite side. In the light blue box on William Street is the bike room, so we'll have a mix of wall-mounted and floor mount bike hoops that can support different types of cycles, and then a door right onto the William Street bikeway. Second floor is a mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments, resident amenities such as the fitness room, lounge, and storage, and then some office space. And then the typical floor plan is a mix of one- and two-bedrooms. As Jennifer said, we have geothermal heating and cooling to achieve the goals of A20 plan. And then I'll just quickly, I have two seconds, so I'll quickly show the renderings.
You can take your time.
Okay. I don't have much to say. I'm not an architect. I'm a landscape architect. But our architect team is here virtually and will be happy to answer any questions. But this is standing on Fifth Avenue looking north, standing on William looking east toward campus, standing on Fourth Avenue looking south toward the Blake, and then standing on William Street. And I'll end with that corner view. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll now turn to Planner Delio, who will give us a staff report. You all can have a seat. We'll call you back up when we finish the public comment and we open the commission discussion. Planner Delio?
Thank you. We have prepared a staff report and offer a recommendation and a proposed motion. Lindsay and, or I should say, Ms. Furco and Ms. Hall have done an excellent job of describing the project. The staff report does contain a little bit of the site history that Ms. Hall also covered in more detail. And I will skip over the planned description part and move on to the, the site plan has been reviewed against the UDC code standards as well as the 350 South Fifth PUD supplemental regulations, which supersede some of the elements of the UDC. And we have found that it complies with all of its PUD supplemental regulations, as well as the remaining applicable standards in the UDC, such as stormwater and so on and so forth. It was reviewed by our development review team. Several departments found, and I should say that the version before you tonight is version two of the plan. Reviewing a plan two to three, sometimes four times, is pretty normal. But since this is an affordable housing project, in order to help it keep on its schedule, we are recommending approval with conditions of version two. So ultimately, we'll be reviewing, or I'm sorry, we'll be approving version three. But for version two, several departments have found it already complies. And then a few departments have required revisions, and one, myself, have just offered a suggestion. Solid Waste Review has found that some revisions are necessary. The Fire Review also has found some revisions, as well as our Soil Erosion Control Review, the DDA Review, and the Engineering Review. Now typically, the planning staff, we recommend approval with conditions as opposed to postponing in order to address the comments. When resolving these outstanding items would not really impact the development program or the proposed layout of the project when they're just generally technical in nature, such as maybe adding or correcting a notation or making a minute revision. And because we have determined that addressing those comments would be that level of administrative or technical, we are proposing that the site plan is approved dated September 10th as amended, subject to and entering into a development agreement with five conditions. And the five conditions match the departments that are requiring revisions. I'm happy to answer any further questions, as I know that Ms. Furco and Ms. Hall are as well. And I will end it there.
Great. Thank you, Planner Delio. We will now have an opportunity for public comment, and I will read our dedicated public comment section. So this is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this item. We will first hear from those of you who are present in the chambers, then to remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine if on phone and use the raise hand feature in Zoom. For phone access, dial 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 877-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name if you are on Zoom. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure you're in a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, whether online or in person, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present who would like to speak at this time?
Hello? Adam Dreskevich, 1430 Las Vegas Drive in the Fourth Ward. And, you know, I really love this project. Like many Ann Arborites my age and older, we have memories of going to the Y at this location and, you know, taking swim lessons and, you know, I did, I did some other, other classes there and stuff, some judo and fencing years ago. I mean, I was like in middle school. So, yeah, this is, this is great. It's a great location, right across from the library, right next to the bus, bus station. I love it. It's the design. I really like the materials and everything. It's, it looks really good. And, you know, this is exactly what I was hoping for when I voted for the Affordable Housing Village. And it's just amazing to me that, that we're able to do this 100% affordable. You know, I know initially we thought this was, it was going to be like a mixed-income thing with market rate apartments and all of that, but it being, you know, getting, getting the mix to where there, you know, the, I guess the most expensive will be 80% AMI, which that's just great. And all of the improvements to the streetscape for the bus station and, and all that, it's just, thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward, and please approve this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's present who would like to speak?
Hello again. This is Lenny Lamping from the Inter Cooperative Council at 337 East William Street. And I gave public comment earlier about general interest in student affordable housing being considered for these new developments, but I want to say specifically, we're very interested in being involved in this project at 350 East William Street. And I don't know if now is the time to go into specific ideas of how we would want to function within that kind of apartment-style space or not, or I've never done public comment before, so I don't know if I could take questions or not either at this time from y'all.
We can, we can hear your questions. We won't be able to answer your questions during your time, but when we start our discussion, a commissioner may respond to a question that you pose.
I see. Okay. Then the one thing that would be of, like, particular use to us again is to have some kind of office space in a building of this nature. And looking at the plans that have been put forth, I see that there's office space for what I presume is the property management team. And I'm wondering if there is the possibility of having space for a group like us or not. And if not, that's not a deal breaker. We would still be very, very interested. And again, we have a, you know, we are in a housing crisis for the student population in the city currently, in addition to the affordable units required for multifamily homes. And the location of 350 East William Street is walking distance to campus, straight shot down East William Street, and would bring more students from the central campus area to the downtown area. So that's definitely something to consider and would potentially, you know, there's kind of a differentiation between where students usually are existing within the Ann Arbor area. They don't go downtown all the time, so that might build a kind of a gap there. And yes, we have the capacity to really scale up our operations, and there's examples of that in Berkeley and in Austin of very, very large cooperatives that function very well, even in the apartment-style units that exist. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I wrote down your question. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak at this time? Manager Kelly, do we have remote participants who would like to speak?
We do. Mark, you have permission to address the Planning Commission.
Hello, Mark Skirbo. This time calling in from Meadowbrook Park. First, thank you all for volunteering your time. You could be like me, riding bikes on a beautiful evening, and instead you're sitting in City Hall doing this important work. I want to express my support for this project. I'm so excited to see an empty surface parking lot actually serve the city and our population with housing that we desperately need. I think, you know, Delonis currently has hundreds of individuals that they're working with to pride to find secure housing, and I think this project can put a pretty big dent in, you know, the number of people who are looking for secure housing. I used to live directly across the street on the corner of Williams and Fifth, and I looked out my window at this desolate parking lot. I've run through that parking lot when trying to catch a bus on one side or the other, and I'm so excited to think about a future where this is housing, this is a bus, you know, expanded bus station. This is giving people, as the previous speaker said, direct access to the university along the bikeway. So this is just a fantastic project. It's a great use of, or combination effort from some of our affordable housing partners along with other kind of national partners to build this housing. So I'm really excited about it. Please vote yes in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom Stolberg. You have permission to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you. I am also very pleased to see this 100% affordable housing development made possible with the actions of many over a long period of time. People who voted for the Affordable Housing Village, past councils. I am disappointed to see the lack of affordable housing being effectively addressed in our current comprehensive plan. If the affordable housing's not in there, it's not going to happen. Relying on the Affordable Housing Village as part of affordable housing in the comprehensive plan is just pennies of what we need and highly insufficient. We need to have direct measures in our comprehensive plan to allow for additional affordable housing, and also what I'd call attainable housing, that what would be beyond the government numerical formulas, but still moderate housing that's desperately needed in Ann Arbor and is not provided for in our comprehensive plan. It's actually reduced by the actions that will come from our comprehensive plan. I'm disappointed in the sale of the Klein's Lot. If that money isn't all going to affordable housing, I think it's a mistake. So perhaps that could be done. Still, there's an opportunity to spend that money that we received in the Klein lots entirely on affordable housing. That seemed to be the intent when we voted for the Affordable Housing Village, that we would develop affordable housing on lots like we're doing here at the old Y lot. So it's, again, a big disappointment in the Klein's Lot. And if we are going to sell it, let's put 100% of that money towards affordable housing. I'm also disappointed in some of the ways we've lost opportunities for affordable housing. Lower Town, South Town, the current development by Core Spaces on William Street right there. The law was changed just prior to their approval, relieving them of a burden of a number of units of affordable housing. So actions taken by the current and some recent councils have cost us tens of millions of dollars of affordable housing or hundreds of units of affordable housing. If we don't take affordable housing seriously at the council table and the planning commission table, it's not going to happen. I hope we can make some changes to the comprehensive plan yet to support affordable housing a lot better than we have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our final caller.
Great. I will close the public comment and read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission Approves Site Plan SP 25-0009, 350 South Fifth Avenue, dated September 10th, 2025, as amended, subject to entering into and satisfying all terms of a development agreement with the following conditions. One, resolve the bus lane conflicts with solid waste collection to the satisfaction of the solid waste manager, and satisfactorily address the remaining comments provided in solid waste review memo two. Statu-, excuse me, satisfactorily address the comments provided in the Fire Review Two Memo. Satisfactorily address the comments provided for in version two of the SESC Review. Satisfactorily address the comments provided in the DDA Review Two Memo, and satisfactorily address the comments provided in the Engineering Review Two. in the engineering review two memo. Moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Weatherby." We are now in discussion. Commissioner Mills is ready to kick us off.
I'm so excited to see this before us. And really thought that we had approved it before. So I'm glad that it complies with what we had talked about years ago. Can you help refresh my memory? Once upon a time, I kind of thought that there was a plan that the building might extend farther to the north, over top of the bus depot. And I'm curious, my reading of the plans, and as you've talked about it, suggests that they don't. And I'm curious to learn why. I mean, this is, this is lovely and it complies. I'm just, I remember, do you remember the conversation about fumes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask if Jeff or Joe happens to be on the call. I don't believe, they're, they're architects, but I don't believe they were on our original plan as architects. But I feel like when, when you all started, we also took a look at that as we were designing this building. And I'm not an architect, but I know there's reasons why we did not do that. Are either one of you able to answer that question? I know I had to do, like, distance of hallways and, you know, length of apartments. There was no advantage, is my recollection-
Jeff Rubik has joined as a panelist.
Okay.
You have permission to speak.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
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 I'm sorry, as I was joining audio, it went mute. So I didn't catch the end of what Jennifer was saying. But I believe the question is, why does that, why does the design no longer go over the bus lanes in, in that area? So I think, if you remember earlier in the conversation, Jennifer presented that there was a much greater expense to the previous design. It was, it was essentially two high-rise towers in one, with two sets of elevator cores and two sets of stairs. And the development was cost prohibitive. So as we created a single building solution, we then moved to something that was much simpler and easier to code.
Okay. So if it was bigger, it might require more of that stair stuff?
Yeah, I realize. Right. Well, I realize I may have misunderstood your question. Our original design was a T-
Right.
With part of the T-
Part of the T over top.
Over the top. And now it's like a little setback like that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's only so much distance, Jeff might be able to speak to that, to have a double-sided hallway that gives you any advantage on-
To doing that.
-increasing your density.
Okay. I was just curious. Again, I don't, I'm not wed to that. And I mean, in my mind, I was thinking, in part, the, your partner in development develops over transit things. That's a terrible thing to say. And so like, maybe that's in the future, like, that's a potential in the future. I don't know if that's been discussed.
Yeah. Some of the challenges in our old design, we actually have Gretchen Johnson here from the AAA TA. She's a planner there, so she might be able to speak to us. Some of our, our challenges with that design of going over the lane were how large the columns had to be to support the building.
Big building.
And it sat in the middle of the sidewalk where we wanted to have people be able to walk to get on and off the bus. So it caused, like, congestion to have those big columns there.
Okay. Two comments. One more question. Geothermal, I'm excited to see this here. I'm a little, I was surprised because I was like, I thought there was a parking garage underneath there. Where it, it's under your site, not in the road right of way or anything?
So the parking garage that's underground-
Yeah.
-is not under our site. It was designed that if you wanted to expand it, there's a place you could punch a hole in-
Ah.
-and dig and do additional parking under our site.
Okay.
Which is extremely expensive, which is why we did not do that.
So there's no parking underneath yours? So you're be, you're able to use the geothermal there?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes.
Um, the, currently, A2D2 and/or, I mean, the ride, or the air, D2A2, sorry, A2D, yeah, whatever, I'm sorry. You know what I meant, though. The air ride picks up on that curb, and so presumably that'll be either taken care of on the Fourth Avenue reconfiguration or this schnazzy new lanes behind, to the north of your building, yeah?
Yeah. I don't think we finalized where that's going to happen, but that's all being in discussion.
Because it ma, that's, it makes sense for the drop-off. And I just want to say, you've set a new standard on location of bike rooms. It is prime real estate, and it is the place that makes sense. It is right on the bicycle, what my children call the bicycle highway. It is accessible from outside. I like that it's shown that there's automatic door openers. I assume that it's key fob or something so that not everybody can go in there. Seriously, like, I really, really appreciate that you have given, made this a convenient option, and made it where bike riders want to go, not next to the trash in the back, through the back, right? Like, this, it, I, serious kudos. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Weatherby?
So I'll just kind of piggyback on some of those because I had similar things written down. First of all, oh, I'm so excited about this, and I hope it comes to fruition, as I'm sure you do more, even more so. But, yeah, I was, you know, the kid at the Y when the first one maybe even got built, and then, when it was demolished, and then we thought so many things were going to happen. And I hope this is the one that actually happens. But I did have some questions. So, again, the Michigan Flyer and the D2A2 buses, I'm assuming that the intent is to keep those services downtown. And I'm, I'm kind of eyeballing over here, just because I, I just think they are really, they're really valuable services. And I, I would hate for this to be seen as a thing that got rid of those services, so.
Right, right. The full intent is to keep them downtown. We are, you know, we're losing a little bit of capacity on Fourth, and so the new bays on the backside of the Blake will make up for that. And, but fully trying to keep the regional buses as close as we can to, to Blake. Just want to make sure we have enough space for our buses and the service that we want to provide.
Yep. Okay. That sounds great. And then, electric bike plugins, electric bike service, because that really seems to be, I'm no longer going to ask about car parking, but I do think electric bikes are kind of suddenly the, the thing of the current and future. And I don't know if that's been thought of. I know there are issues about that, but is that anything on your radar, or?
We've had a lot of conversations. I'm going to ask Joseph if you can join the conversation. He was one of the designers.
Promoted Joseph, and he had to, I don't know, un-promote himself. But I will, I don't, I no longer see Joseph.
I think he had another meeting.
Maybe they've joined by phone.
If you could promote Michael?
I have Michael Kaplan and Jeff Rubik who are available to speak.
Okay. Either one of them would be fine. Or Denise, any one of them, to speak on the final design.
Okay. Michael or Jeff, please go ahead and address the commission.
Hi, everybody. Michael Kaplan, Related Midwest. I, I think that's a great comment. And I'm going to let Jeff answer to the feasibility of it, because if we can do it, I think we should do it.
Yeah. So we do have the bike room, which is located, as mentioned, in a quite prominent location. And it actually has glass on it, so we are actually promoting it as, as an amenity. The charging is, is going to be provided. We are still working through the final design drawings, so we haven't identified the total amounts or any of those types of things yet. But this is, this is a design element that we are absolutely considering.
I can tell you from just buying an electric bike, somebody else might have one, in talking to the salesperson, it's the higher-end bikes. You don't have to worry about the fires, but it's when you buy, like, the knockoff sort of cheaper plugs, that's what causes fires. So that's the concern we have. We're having the same conversations at other sites. If there's ways to make sure there's not going to be a fire, because you definitely don't want that on your first floor or anywhere near your building, then we will figure it out.
Okay. Awesome. And then I think my, well, air quality, and I think the time, enough time has passed that I think most of the buses are electric, or, or getting there.
Not quite.
I, I don't know if that's, I mean, that's, I don't think it's as much of an issue as it was. And we're not talking about putting housing right over the buses, but still adjacent to the buses.
Yeah, right. Adjacent buses. The, we have all diesel or hybrid buses, and for the foreseeable future, that's what we will be purchasing. We have plans to explore hydrogen. Still uncertain if that's the full direction that will go. So buses last 12 years roughly. So, I mean, we hope to start transitioning soon to purchase de-emission vehicles, but it's still very much in a, it's a long timeline out for buses, and so still-
Which is kind of great about buses, that they last that long, so.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So, very hefty vehicles.
Yep. Okay, thank you. And then I just have one last question, which is construction. So, construction, as we've all seen, can last multiple years. And down the street, the bike lane was left open during the construction on the tower that's going up. And is that something that we can, keeping, keeping the bike, the bike lane open during construction on, like, some of the other buildings around town where they just close off the sidewalks and the bike lanes, that, this is going to be a really tricky place to just close those off. So I don't know if, I assume you've thought about this, but, but are there plans to keep the bike lane open, as many sidewalks open as possible? Because the buses, I assume, are still going to be running throughout all this construction, so.
Right. I mean, this is one of the many challenges of this particular site, particularly with transit, and figuring out what's going to happen during construction. I know we've had many conversations about that, Michael. My recollection is that we have to keep that bike lane open, and so we have to protect it. Do you have anything else you'd like to add related to that?
I don't. I think it is a challenge. The logistical plan is in detail, but I, I do know, I, I believe for a portion that it may not be accessible. But I would need to, I think we need a little bit more detail on exactly the planning as far as being able to get materials in and have it be safe as well.
Any type of plan that we put in place does have to go through and get approved by the Transportation DDA to make sure it meets their requirements. So we will absolutely do what we're required to do. Protect that. Yeah, for sure.
And we agree with the, the value of keeping it open, so that will be certainly the goal.
And the DDA's been a great partner. If there's a reason we have to temporarily move it to a safe route, that will happen. I mean, they'll work with us in doing that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherby. Commissioner Norton?
I just have a couple of questions. I'm, I'm curious, you, just out of curiosity more than anything else, you had mentioned that early on, you thought you were going to have to do some market rate housing, and now you're able to do all affordable. And I'm curious, why? Is it all being covered to the mill?
The world's very weird. Financing, the marketplace, products that are available, it's just like constantly changing. And when we did a national selection process for a co-developer, bringing in Related Midwest, who's done these very complicated, they do market rate, but they also do dedicated all affordable. And so they've actually been a great partner in figuring out how to put the right financing together in, in different ways. And Michael can talk more detail about it. There's more, it's more feasible with the funding that's available to make a lower-income affordable unit feasible to build compared to a market rate, because you have subsidy that you can add to it. Whereas if you're trying to build market rate and it's costing, you know, $500,000 a unit, you have to have really, really, really high rents to be able to make back the cost of taking on the debt to build that. And so we have, I don't know how many layers of different types of funding we have. We have 14 at our Dunbar Tower. I don't think we have that many yet here, but we have a lot. Do you have anything to add to that, Michael?
Yeah. I, I think that's exactly right. And I think one thing that's changed in the tax credit program, which is sort of the key funding linchpin to these types of projects, is the ability to income average, which I think was, you know, sometime around 2018, 19 or so. But that 80% unit is actually more feasible than the market rate unit, especially when you're thinking of doing a third of the building with one type of unit. You know, sometimes having a small portion of the building be market rate can be a challenge to achieve, you know, $5 per square foot in rent. This, the 80% AMI sort of serves that purpose. It's a discount to market, but it is still, you know, it is, it is sort of a moderate income level. And so ultimately, the plan here, by substituting those units in for, for the market units is, is what kind of pulled the last pieces together, and also generated support from MISTAA and other parties that are helping to fund it.
And when Michael was talking about income averaging, so the biggest source of financing, I know you know, is low-income housing tax credits. And it used to be 60% AMI was the highest income that you could use tax credits on. And the income averaging allows you to, and is an incentive to serve lower-income households as well. And that's why we have 30% AMI households, and we have 80%, we have 60%. And so when you average that together, it averages less than 60%. And as Michael said, that's a change in the IRS code that allows us to do that.
And will you be providing services too? Or it's not just the housing? You're also going to be providing-
Yes.
Housing services?
And all the 30% AMI households have what we call project-based vouchers. And so they'll have a rent subsidy attached to them, so they will all pay 30% of their income on rent.
Okay. And then I just have one more question, if I could. I'm just curious, are, do you foresee any trouble meeting the conditions that the C staff have identified, or are they all doable things?
I, I don't see a problem meeting them. No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you bringing this forward as quickly as you did. Thank you.
Yep. You want to go? I can go if you want more time.
I just have one tiny question.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a tiny question that emerged from what you just said. So I, I remember when we, on council, passed the income averaging so that you could use it. So when you average everything, does, is the average 80 or is the average 60?
It's less than 60, isn't it, Michael? It's more like in the 50 percentage.
Yeah, I think we're at about 57.
And is it, does it have to be, could it be 80 or does it have to be, it, it has to be 60 or under?
60% or under.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay. That was the thing I wanted to make sure I understood.
Commissioner Adams?
Okay. I just have some, like, can you help me understand kind of questions? So we'll start with the capital stack, which you, we are just in. And for those who are listening, the capital stack just sort of refers to the layers of financing that makes a project like this work. And so you have built a stack of tools. According to the plan, you are estimating the project's going to cost about $220 million to construct?
Correct.
So that brings the unit cost to $666,000 per unit. Is that accurate?
That sounds right. Is that right, Michael? Michael's our finance. It includes all the, everything, you know, the commercial too.
That is correct. Although, one, one caveat I will, we'll share is that, again, on a tax credit project where we're bringing outside investment that are investing in these tax credits, one thing we do is we include certain costs that have offsetting sources. So for instance, you know, you might have land that's contributed. We still show that cost. Similarly, when it comes to developer fee, we're actually reinvesting the developer fee in the project. You do it for purposes of the tax credit, but it does tend to sort of inflate the total budget. I would say it's more like 575- budget. I would say it's more like 575,000 per unit, still a very high number.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that's just an $80,000 cut per unit, but gone.
Yeah, but it is, it is still expensive. I will say the other piece of the puzzle here is, you know, one of the goals of the project was to, I think, set a new high watermark in terms of sustainability. Those things come with the cost. The benefit, you know, another, the geothermal system, for instance, that's not cheap. That comes with the tax credit as well. So I think, you know, in a world where if you're building just market rate and you're not pursuing some incentives, yes, the cost would be lower. But this is more than just the housing. I think there's kind of a broader demonstration that's part of this project.
So, just a quick follow-on to that, Michael. Why have you, you indicated that the developer fee is being reinvested. Is that a typical approach in a development like this? I haven't heard of such a thing at the table.
It, in a low-income housing development, that is common, MISTHA, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, they govern the program and allocate the tax credits. They have a formula for how much developer fee you can take. It, I think it's more than, you know, on a project of this size, it becomes a big number. But the smart thing to do, rather than to reduce the fee, is to make a contribution back to the project. So we're basically loaning it back into the project.
Okay. So, and this is where I'm learning, and so I want to get some information. So, the tax structure for this is going to be a pilot, so a payment in lieu of taxes?
For the property taxes, correct.
Can you just briefly give us a sentence or two of what that, what that means for the city and for this development?
Sure. It's going to be complicated, and I'll bring Michael in, because we actually have a pilot for the residential, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. It's allowed under, the state of Michigan has a pilot ordinance. You have to be a certain kind of project. Affordable housing through low-income housing tax credits makes you ineligible for a pilot. The city has to adopt their own ordinance, which it has. The city's ordinance is $1 per unit per year for affordable housing that qualifies. Not every project that's affordable qualifies. It has to meet the legal standards. But we also have just been invited by MEDC to do a transformational brownfield, which is more, even more complicated tax implications. So I'm going to let Michael talk about that.
Yes. So the transformational brownfield, it provides, and it's a program through Michigan Economic Development Corporation. It is a tool to recapture essentially all state taxes that the project generates. And that includes income taxes paid by construction workers during the construction period, sales tax, also some operating assumptions as far as tax recapture. So that, that piece of funding is an income stream that will come in in the future, that we're able to borrow against. And we're expecting that'll be about $6 to $8 million. It would be larger if there wasn't the pilot, but as far as recapturing state and income taxes, that's another $8 million that essentially the state is contributing. MISTHA is also contributing $8 million.
Okay. I'm going to stay in this finance thing, because this is a very complicated project, and I just want to make sure I understand. Who's going to be the owner of the land? Is that going to be the Ann Arbor Housing Development Corporation, or is it the commission, or is it the city?
So the Ann Arbor Housing Development Corporation, which is our 501(c)(3), we currently own the land. And we're going to do what we've done on all of our other projects, where we've done li-tech financing, where we will do a ground lease to the owner of the physical building. And that's, all of our properties are done that way. And so that physical building is owned by, it's called a low-income housing development, it's not authority, uh, low-income housing, L-D-H-A.
Limited Dividend Housing Association.
Thank you, sorry. Limited Dividend Housing Association. You're required to create one under the IRS code for low-income housing tax credits. And that's how you are able to get a equity investor who provides cash. They provide equity for your project. And then Related and the Housing Commission, we've each formed new legal entities that will be sort of limited asset to this one asset. And we are partnering together as a general partner. So we're together as a general partner. We'll partner together with our equity partner, and that will be our entity that will own the building. So we'll continue to be part of the ownership, but we will own the land. So if the building burned down, which I hope would never in a million years happen, we would still own the land underneath it, which has a permanent deed restriction that was put on by the city when they sold us the property.
And you're also the co-developer of the development as well?
We're the co-developer, that's correct.
Okay. So it's my understanding that MISTHA does two granting periods a year, one in April and one in October for projects like this. Is that correct?
They, I think you're talking about, what's a 9% competitive?
Yep, the 9% and the 4%.
Yep, we are doing a 4%.
So you're not doing 9% on this project?
We're not doing a 9%, we're doing a 4%, which comes with bond financing through MISTHA. They provide a construction loan through bond sales, and then it turns into a permanent loan at the end of the project, size for what we can afford. And they're also putting in gap financing and...
Which was my next question, because how are you filling in the gap? Because by my calculations, about 60 to 70% would come through the low-income tax, but then you still had about 80 to 90 million that you had to finance, but go on.
No, Michael, do you want to go through the capital stack? Do you have it in front of you?
Yes, yes. So...
And I appreciate your indulgence, that I can get these questions asked. I've been thinking about this for a while, so.
Of course. So you're right. The two biggest pieces of the capital stack are debt and equity. Equity comes from the sale of the tax credits, and debt is this bond financed with MISTHA, which gets repaid with the income after expenses that the property generates. Together, those work out to about, it's about 75% of the project costs.
Okay, I was estimating 70, but that's good.
Yeah, good. Then we have essentially our subsidy sources. It's about $8 million from, and I should say, if you're counting up to 220, that's where I would add that some of these sources and uses, there's some lines that are on both sides of the equation.
Understood.
Figure it's more like 200. Between the debt and equity, it's something like 135, I want to say. You have another 8 million that comes from the federal subsidy for MISTHA, that's closer home funds. 8 million about, which is borrowed from the MEDC funds. We have about 4 million in investment tax credits that are from the geothermal system. And then the last chunk is about $40 million needed to close the gap. That is money that we've identified, it will come from a variety of sources, but will all funnel through the Ann Arbor Housing Development Corporation. Jennifer, maybe it would make sense if you want to talk through what some of those sources within that bucket are?
Sure. So within that 40 million, we're pulling small, well, million dollars, but not hundreds of millions of dollars, from various locations. So Eagle for Brownfield, the Housing Commission has to be the applicant. Wasna County Brownfield Authority, probably be about a million as well. The DDA has funds in it. And as we're pulling these together, Federal Home Loan Bank, different locations, different types of funds, whatever's left will end up being a request to city council to do a bond sale, pay back with future millage. So we're trying to get it down in like the 30, 33, maybe 34 million. So we don't need it for closing, because we don't have it, because we need it over time until the end of the millage. So it might be two and a half-ish million dollars a year, for example, to pay back that bond over the length of the millage. And that allows us to bring that capital in upfront for a large project like this. Otherwise, we would not have been able to do it.
All right. I'm going to pause and just check the table, because I have just two or three more questions.
I just want to thank you for what you've asked so far.
Sure. Is it okay? You all can tell me no, and I'll, okay. So, talk to, help me understand the difference between the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as a funding source and the Affordable Housing Millage, because I just learned they are different.
Yes. So the, what used to be called the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is now called the Ann Arbor Affordable Housing Fund. It's been around since the 1980s, and it was intended to be a place where developer contributions could go, general fund contributions, sales from land.
Is that where the PUD contributions would go?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, like zoning, or, you know, things like that, yes.
And sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, it's okay. So it has had some money, maybe a couple million at most. I think when the Y lot sold, the contribution that came from that, from the city, it was, I want to say it was around $3.5 million. We were able to use that to redevelop all of our public housing sites. I think that's the most it ever had, up until this year. It often had zero. So when the Affordable Housing Millage was adopted, there was no money in the housing fund. It still exists, but we've recently had probably ones, projects you all are familiar with, because you've had to approve them, where developers have made cash contributions into that fund. So I just checked the other day, there's about $5.8 million in that Affordable Housing Fund. The Housing Commission administers that fund, but we aren't the only ones that would spend it. It can go to other developments. That's different, and that's held by the city. And we would have to go to city council, project by project, to draw funds down from that. The millage is its own set of funds. It's its own, I don't know, I don't know what the city would call it. The city tracks all that. They collect taxes, they put it into a separate account, so it's tracked separately. They, the city contracts with the Housing Commission to administer those funds. And again, we aren't the only ones that would use it. Other developers can use it as well. When there's money available, right now, the millage is very tied up in this project and multiple other projects we're working on. So when the millage was adopted in 2020, funds first came into the project in 2021. That was the first time funds were available. The first year, there was roughly $6.5 million. Now there's roughly about $7.5 million that comes in annually into that fund. And it can be used for projects, both are for projects up to 60% AMI with a specific target for 30% AMI. Like, if you applied and you have some 30% AMI units set aside, you would have more preference over someone who only has 60% AMI, for example.
A follow-up, right where we are. So the millage is income restricted at no more than 60 AMI, but your other funding sources may not have that restriction. So that is also why you're able to do this up to 80% here, in addition to the income averages, to allow for this whole thing to be affordable. Am I understanding this correctly?
Correct. So when the city sold the property to us in, I think, 2022 or 23, we did a appraisal, I think the year before that. I think the appraisal was about 12 million, if I recall-ish. And the city sold it to us for 6.2. So right there, it's about a 50% discount on the value of that land. So, in my mind, I would want at least 50% of the units to be 60% AMI or less. We're more like 60 years, six, almost two-thirds of our units or more, Michael, are 60% AMI or less, with a lot of them at 30% AMI.
Half of them are below 60%, and then half are 70 and 80.
Oh, we have some at 72. I forgot about that. So we're, we are meeting the intent of that source of funds.
Not just the intent, but the actual law, because you have to.
The actual implementation. And with the project costing $220 million, if we end up putting, even if we put 35 or 40 million in millage, it's still a small percent of the total development cost. And for the public, I would just say, I would never want to only use millage funds as a source, local millage funds as a source for development, because there's other places you can leverage, like we're doing, even though it's a lot of work, it's a lot of brain damage, it takes a lot of time. It stretches out those funds so you can do more projects.
Oh. Ms. Hall, thank you so much for explaining this. This is really, really complicated. And it just goes to how difficult it is for us to achieve our goals of creating permanent affordable housing for those who are at need. I just have two more questions. One, have you considered burn boxes for the charging of your e-bikes? Because that can be a way for you to ensure that even the lower-quality batteries won't have a negative impact.
Yes. We're actually exploring that at another site right now. So we'll see how that goes. It will be, that site will be up and running way before this one, and we will know how that goes for us.
Okay. And then my last question is, do you anticipate at all your construction overlapping with the new downtown library development? And are you in talks with the downtown library about your construction and theirs?
Not recently, but we will have to, along with any other businesses in the area when we get to that point. We are hoping to close, we need to close, in the spring of 2026. Our construction period will go through the end of 2028.
Okay.
So it'll be a two-year construction cycle.
Great. Thank you so much for your time, your expertise, and your patience with my questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there other questions from other commissioners?
Could I just ask, how much of the millage will this particular project consume?
I think it'll end up being somewhere between 33 and 35 million dollars out of the 220 for the whole project.
But that's spread out over multiple years?
Spread out from here to the end of the life of the millage in 2040.
Which is a 20-year, yeah, it's a 20-year millage, right?
So in other words, there's still plenty of millage to leverage other projects?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because they're receiving...
This isn't taking all of the millage?
No.
Yeah, they're receiving about $7.5 million a year.
And that is the advantage, and that's a huge advantage from my perspective, on doing the bond financing and paying it back with the millage. Otherwise, I would have to bank it, bank it, bank it, bank it, bank it, bank it, then build something. Bank, 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 then build something. This way, we can have multiple projects going on at the same time. I just did an updated list for city council. We have over 1,200 units right now built or in the pipeline that have millage dollars in them.
Okay, thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions, thank you so much. You can return to your seats. I don't think we're going to ask you any more questions at this point. Manager Kelly, I think we are ready for a roll call vote.
On the motion as presented, Wysh.
Yes, enthusiastically.
Dish.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Weatherby.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
That carries.
The motion carries. Good luck. All right, thank you, everyone. We will move now to item number 11. Other business, there is none. That brings us to item number 12, another opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. We'll first hear from those who are present with us in the chambers, then we will turn to remote participants. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone, or use the raise hand feature if on Zoom. For phone access, dial 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number, or by name if on Zoom. If you hear, you will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure you're in a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present in the chambers who would like to speak at this time?
Hey, I'm Adam Duskevich, Las Vegas Drive in the Fourth Ward. I just want to thank you for that discussion. I've learned so much from that. So thank you for asking all those questions, and, and thank you for answering them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, Manager Kelly, do we have remote participants who would like to speak?
There is one hand raised, phone number NA and 672. You have permission to address the planning commission for three minutes. This hand was raised quite a bit earlier. I'm not sure if their intention was to speak... I'm not sure if their intention was to speak or not.
Well, we'll give it just a few more moments.
I have nudged our caller to unmute.
I will go ahead and close the public comment and move us to agenda item number 13. Is there any commission proposed business? Commissioner Mills?
It's not really commission proposed business, but I wanted to make sure that you got your question answered. I saw a business card exchange hands, and just wanted to say that oftentimes, like, house space is used within buildings is outside of our purview. We, within zoning, we regulate kind of the uses within a building, but just like, we often know whether the intention is for it to be rental or, you know, for sale units, but we don't regulate that way. And so it's not that we didn't ask it, I thought it was taken care of, but just so you kind of understand how, what is within our purview.
I will allow it. Go ahead. Come up to the mic.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that explanation. I guess my question is, is there anything within the zoning that exists currently that would prevent cooperative housing from being considered in the usage of this space?
That's a really good question, and we have to check the use table, because effectively, what's allowed here, this is special regulations on this particular property. And so, but they reference what is allowed in our downtown zones. So give me a minute, and I promise I'll open up the UDC unless staff is already doing that. Like, afterwards, I can show you where to find out.
Yes. And I just want to clarify that we, I believe, are no longer associated with fraternities and sorority Greek life, and we are a separate entity from that, if that changes any consideration.
I was going to say, definitions are, that's one of the things that like, actually, it makes it a little bit complicated, so.
Yeah, I'm going to turn to Planner Delio, because you seem to grab something, and move your mic closer. Did you have a answer for us?
I will have to consult the UDC if you are talking about group housing. But if you are talking about the apartment style with up to six unrelated persons per apartment, that is certainly permitted. That's a, that's just regular residential use. And like, as mentioned, we don't, the UDC does not actually regulate, so we are completely open to whether they are owned, or leased, or rented, or given away for free, or bartered, or cooperatively managed.
Okay. I, I think it's a separate descriptor than even group housing. I think cooperative, at least at the state level, is considered something entirely different than group housing, but it might be different at the city level, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commission proposed business? With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Weatherby, seconded by Commissioner Mills. All those in favor say aye. Any aye opposed? We are adjourned.
I pulled up the UDC.